Good evening and welcome to a joint planning and development subcommittee town council meeting. It is Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is six P M. We're here in the G A R hall, the Economic Development Office. First order of business is called a order, second order of business is roll call. Counselor Kelly?
Present.
Citizen Bernardon?
Present.
Citizen Larochelle?
Present.
Counselor Daniels is present and Counsel Marketti is absent. Item number three, grab a motion to postpone until the next P and D meeting, something has come up with the family and question and they aren't able to make their presentation at this time.
Motion, I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Kelly, second by Citizen Bernard Larochelle. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Item number four, review discuss applying for the municipal vulnerability preparedness action grants, expression of interest to assess public and private dams and levees in Southbridge and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend approval to town council.
So moved.
Second.
Let's do the next one.
Very good. Mister Manager, you're going to refer?
Yeah, Peg has been working on this quite diligently and she has the information.
Very good. Ms. Dean?
We brought this item to you last year. You approved us pursuing this expression of interest. However, we didn't go forward because we found a FEMA grant that looked like it was more suitable. The fire chief was very interested in that one. However, he learned that it was going to be a lot more time consuming for staff and in the end, we had timed out of the municipal vulnerability preparedness opportunity, but chose not to take on more than we could handle through the FEMA grant. We're now proposing once again, can we please go for the MVP action grant? And this is not the the actual grant application, this is the initial expression of interest just to find out if this is an appropriate item to to request. They'll give us feedback if they think it's a strong application, they'll indicate so and then we can come back to you to apply.
Very good. Any discussion at the table?
I've got two questions. First of all, how many dams and levees do you know we have in Southbridge?
I don't know, that's part of what we need to assess.
And the second question would be, is there a cost to the town? Do we have to put in a certain amount for the grant?
There's no match.
None? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else at the table? In the audience?
Any?
Very good. There being no further discussion, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? The unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Very good. Item number five, review discuss the acceptance of the donation of a marble bench from Patrick Morrell to be located at seventy-six Central Pocket Park and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend approval to town council.
I'll second.
And Catherine, that's a second. Very good. Ms. Dean?
The memo I provided shows the location where we'll install the bench. It's circled in blue on the picture there. This is that new park at seventy-six Central where Morrell's business previously was. We had indicated at some point along the way, it would be great to mention that there were five generations that worked here at this location. And he in turn suggested donating a bench and engraving it with the language. And the language was approved by the local historic district study committee.
Questions at the table?
No question, I just want to say that's beautiful. I think it's a great idea and I appreciate it because like you said, it brings out all the generations, how long it's been here. So thank you to them.
And the nice thing is it's going to be right along the rail trail areas, so people that come off and they sit and notice that was part of Southbridge history going way back and, you know, so I think it's appropriate with all the work that they've done in town on history and in that field.
Is this going to conflict at all, conflict at all with the building of the rail trail?
Not at all. So the Pocket Park is actually just adjacent to the rail trail. Yeah, so if you look, if you look here, yeah, so this is its own parcel.
Yep.
Yep, and then as you recall, just around here will be the rail trail and then a little farther over here will be that new Larochelle Way that will come through. Yeah. So yeah, everything has plenty of space. And we wanted the bench to be very visible, so that's why we chose it right front and center there. Yes, so we preemptively put down that concrete pad when we were doing construction to be able to install.
Very good.
And Mister Morrell would have liked to have been here, he had calling hours at six tonight.
He's busy.
So I suggested if he was interested in attending town council, depending on how tonight goes, that I would let him know if he'd recommend it.
I'd like to thank Mister Morrell for his donation. It truly is a wonderful donation. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? No one opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number six, review discuss applying for the Community First Partnership Grant and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend approval to town council.
So moved.
Second.
I think on this one, I know Peg and I had participated in a call, we got in this with National Grid and their folks and it was a very interesting program about how we could educate and assist people in our community on energy savings at no cost to the town. So they would, they would pay for an employee to work for the town, to do outreach with different languages and such and educate individuals that have a focal point if people had wanted to come in for something like a mass save program or anything like that, that they could come into the town hall and be able to work with somebody locally. And we got those programs, I'll let Peg elaborate on that, but I think this is an exciting time, especially, you know, you have the move for all electric, then you have the energy savings. We just got the rate on our municipal electric aggregation plan.
Very good.
Yesterday, which was a very good rate, about thirteen cents per kilowatt hour.
Wow.
That'll be fixed for thirty-five months, so we're doing everything that we can to educate and save residents money. So this was a great opportunity for us to provide a service at no cost to the town. Else I'd probably give them a little bit of space for them to work out of here. That would be it.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
Oh, if there are questions first, it's up to you.
Okay, very good. DeeDee?
Okay, my question is, are they going to go door to door to residents?
So the National Grid approached us, just to actually give them a little bit of credit here. We didn't even pursue this grant. They called us and said, you are a great candidate as a low income community and we would love to see you do this. We would also love to promote you for another grant that's going to become available in the next few months. One, so this one is residents and businesses, the other one is for more municipalities, but we can tailor it a little bit to whatever we like. So they suggest we apply for both in the long term and then it's a combined full-time position. So this is the first request is just for this half-time position, but eventually it will be a full-time position. And what we're stating within the application is where the touchpoints would be with residents and businesses is either teaming them up with inspections, when inspections goes out, they could happen to be going with them and if it's, if it's with the landlord or the property owner, they can be educating them on, you know, these are some of the opportunities for weatherization and improvements, right? In conjunction with, you know, potential violations they may have, right? Look, you could be, you know, improving your home this way or your business this way. We'll be putting out mailers, we'll be, any opportunity that might allow them to interface without necessarily going door to door. But, you know, if you have suggestions or strategies, by all means.
I was just curious, who do we have now going door to door for the town?
Nobody. They are not representatives of the town.
They are not. They say they are.
They say they are. I've already talked to the police chief on that.
And I, we told them like twice to leave.
Right.
And they'd come back and Roland says, well, how to leave, don't you understand?
So the chief, I'll follow up with the chief again, but it happened at my house the other day when I was home.
Yeah. Oh, wrong person.
You know, but I had to do some research because I wanted to make sure that we didn't have a program.
Right.
That I wasn't aware of.
Okay.
They also had an I D badge that had the Southbridge P D.
I know.
And a photo, so the chief is researching to see.
Wow.
On that.
Yeah.
So they are a company, they are registered with the town, but they are not working on behalf of the town. The chief was going to do some research in regards to the I Ds because they used to have old I Ds that they would give if somebody came in for a solicitation permit. So we, he was going to reach out to the company, I'll follow up with them because, like I said, it did happen to mine and I'm going, I'm the town manager and I don't, I don't recollect you working for the town. So we have followed up on that.
All right. We'll have to figure out something in order to let people know that the town does have somebody going out. I don't know if they come with a National Grid car, so you see the car with National Grid all around it. Because these people are walking, I didn't see a vehicle.
Yeah, so. I think we would do something that allows to education too, that we would make sure that we have people out there and.
Right.
Social media and everything that says these are representatives of the town.
Okay.
And make sure they had legit, you know.
All right, thank you. That was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else at the table? Counsel Shania?
Is this going to be an employee of the town or a National Grid?
The town, fully funded by National Grid.
So.
Fringe benefits included.
I, I understand that, but that employee becomes employee of the town, works for the town in Southbridge. Who's responsible for them?
They will sit in my office, I will oversee their work, but they have a network of these energy advocates that will get, they'll, they'll be fed information, marketing materials, strategies by National Grid to help them to be able to do their job better. So I don't have to be an energy expert, I don't have to have any background, subject matter expertise in this.
Is this a time sensitive employee where it's a two-year, one-year grant, those kind of things?
Correct.
So we're not going to be responsible for retirement benefits and those kind of things?
Correct. So we would be responsible for retirement if we hire them as full-time during that time, yes. But we are building in fringe to the position, just like we do with, we have grant funded, you know, positions down here and we build in those fringe benefits for those positions. However, we, we post it as temporary until the life of the grant or the life of that project is done.
Schedule, whatever schedule has to be changed or added to, correct?
Correct.
My concern is somebody coming in and being overpaid because it's a National Grid payment compared to somebody that's been here for a while, you know what I'm saying? I would like to pay to be equal to somebody that's kind of that position.
So I'm dictated by National Grid that we have to pay at least thirty dollars an hour plus whatever our built-in fringes. So I have stated on the application thirty dollars an hour and then an extra twenty percent for fringe will be, will be part of our award, not to, not necessarily to them.
Okay.
Now, if somebody from the town wished to apply for it and wanted a temporary position, they could go for it, but we would fill their position with no guarantee. But if they wanted to take the chance to say, hey, I'll take this two-year opportunity and make thirty dollars an hour, that's up to them.
So is, okay, go ahead.
There's also comparable position already put in place, the Urban Forester, do you remember we went through that process?
Oh, yeah.
So that's identical. It's a grant funded temporary position, except they are only nineteen hours, we're avoiding benefits in that position. But they sit down here, I do not necessarily direct their, their tree work, right? But I'm here to account for their time and their, right? We need to make sure that people are accountable to the town. So yeah, so I'm, I'm the one that's approving their payroll, I'm the one who knows their hours and then they're reporting out to me, Rich, and their commission.
Okay.
And so you could do something similar with an energy advocate, you know, who do the, who do we want them to report to? Probably me, Jack and Rich, right? And, and then I would just be making sure that they're actually doing the hours they're saying so that I could legitimately cut paycheck for them.
So are we going to have to provide transportation with this person or is that part of the grant?
No. Neither.
Okay, so when they go out on the road or something like that, what are they going to do? Use, we're going to work it out with a town pool car, whatever?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Are they going to work, the governor just signed a bill dealing with low-cost energy to poor people, seniors and those kinds of things, as high as seventy-one percent of the bill is going to be funded by the government. Are they going to work on that program? Just the governor just signed, do you know? Are you aware of the program?
If I understand that program, it automatically enrolls people who are already in SNAP or in.
Yes, yeah.
Other entitlement programs.
Medicaid.
Yes, so I don't know how much involvement this energy advocate would need to even have in that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think of this more for the weatherization of homes, you know, and, and then that in turn reduces their energy bills.
Okay.
Yeah, but they will have their whole toolkit of ways, right, to get the energy you need, reduce the energy costs you have, improve the homes, right? And so for us, like when we're doing the C D B G housing rehab, one of the requirements is we tie them into mass save programs because it's another easy way for people to improve their homes, right? Modernize their homes with, you know, whatever, insulation, new windows, things like that, right?
So you're going to be the supervisor, Jack's going to be the boss of both.
The way, the way it is with a lot of these people.
They're not going to be on their own, they're going to be answerable to somebody.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
My question is, do I?
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a mass save program, the idea is to get them, is the idea to get people to make mass save appointments and have a complete energy assessment? Like you can make a mass save appointment, somebody will come out to your house and they'll do a, do an assessment, usually it's a third-party contractor that will do that? Is that how that, this is going to work?
I'm sure that's one of their big agendas, yes. Just like the letter we sent out as a town, two months ago in partnership with National Grid, encouraging people to please take advantage of the mass save program, which, you know, a lot of that program is doing those energy assessments. And then the energy assessments lead to the light bulbs, the insulation, the, you know, whatever they can get out of the program.
Are they going to, are they going to facilitate loans for heating upgrades and things of that nature as well? I mean, I think that's part of the mass save program, isn't it? Tax-free loans?
That's a, that's a great question. I don't know enough about it. Yeah.
I did read an article somewhere recently that mass save is having trouble getting rid of the money. They collect money in your bills all trying to go towards mass, mass save programming and that and it was, maybe that's why they were offering this, because there was an excess of money that wasn't being utilized. And so I take it that's part of the reason why they're going with this type of program for them to put somebody in the community as an employee.
Just as an aside to those folks out there, I highly recommend you do this because I did it and upgraded my entire heating system. And you get a, you get a tax-free loan, not a tax-free loan, but you get, you get a, you get a lot of rebates.
Yeah.
And the loan is interest-free. So.
Yeah.
It's, it's a fantastic program and there's really no good excuse not to do it.
And I think the recognition when we talk to National Grid too is of the number of multifamily units that we have and the rehab on those and landlords and they could save money too for their tenants and perhaps hopefully pass on those savings to their tenants.
And we could bring in a National Grid representative to speak more at length about, you know, what this program offers if it seems like there's a lot more questions that would like to be answered about it. We just need a permission to apply for the grant by November first.
So if we were to try to somebody to come in and give to council, maybe you can talk about it?
Sure. So if you want to ask the chairman if he's interested in bringing someone in the next few months?
Perhaps when we get that second round of grants too, that we can bring it in and tie it all together.
That's a great idea. Okay, so we'll wait.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's a big four off. Unanimous of all present. Item number seven, review discuss the approval of amendment number two for River Crane Street and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend approval to town council.
So moved.
One question before you go into discussion. Was this a D P W subcommittee issue? Because it says up top there, D P W, I want to, I tried calling.
Oh, forgive me. I'm so sorry.
It could be both, I mean, it's, Peg is managing the rail trail and has been key with River Crane, so it's kind of both because the rail trail is technically under the Economic Development Planning Committee.
And River Crane is funded by C D B G.
C D B G monies too.
And Mass Works.
Mass Works. So it's a combination of both, it's not a slight on you.
No, no, I will say it that way, but other members of the committee.
Good question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain, I'll explain it to town council. We have multiple grants that cover from both departments. And I think we knew we were having this meeting as well, so I'll gladly take the hit at town council, but we have these, you know, we have, we have these, Peg has been the lead on all this and a lot of these planning has come out of Economic Development Plan because of the grants that she seeks and then they come out of this office for the grants that assist in those projects. So a little bit of both, so.
I apologize, that's an old memo, hence the Peg being the C D B G coordinator also.
Oh, yeah.
So you can see, it's just, it's an outdated memo, I apologize.
I just thought that was an added title.
If you'd like, I can ask to have it corrected in advance if the pack is going out?
So, as, if I may.
Certainly.
Did you get a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
To concentrate this point as well, we have a lot of grants that are being managed, thankfully, a lot of coordination with Peg being the lead to manage these grants and get these grants. This is the River Crane Street project along with the rail trail grant. And as we know, we needed oversight in those, we had built into the budget oversight by the engineering. Through Peg's work with B S C Group, because B S C Group is doing both the rail trail and River Crane project, we're able to reduce hours and add hours to each project and balance them out with no change orders. You know what I mean? So there's no dollar change, it's just amendments to the contract to say what hours are going to be allocated to what project to ensure full-time oversight of this project. And I will announce again on Monday night, but we were fortunate enough to get a two-point seven million dollar grant Friday through Peg's hard work, along with Steve Gregoire, Hannah, Rich and their department, but Peg took the lead on it. We were able to secure the second Mass Works grant for two-point seven million dollars that was awarded on Friday, which kudos to Peg, for the remainder of River Street Crane to Pleasant Street. So that, we will finish the design on that with B S C Group. So this is a huge project, so you combine those two projects that we're talking ten million dollars worth of projects on those two projects.
And that goes right from Hamilton all the way to Pleasant Street?
It's going to go from Hamilton to Pleasant and we were able to secure that grant through the, writing up the grant to say, hey, we also have the Mill Street bridges that are going to be done in the following year. So our goal was to have this River Crane Pleasant Street area done and connect it before they do the bridges and it's all tied into them.
So the Globe is getting some loving.
They're getting a lot of love.
That's good.
Yeah.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, through you, Mister Chairman. I just don't have a lot of background on, on this, so it's, I'm not really sure what the project's all about. I wasn't on council last year.
Sure.
And I just, maybe it came to general government, but I just not, I don't recall what this is, what this, what this, what this project is.
Can I share?
Yes, please.
Okay, so back when Heather Blakely was on staff, we were proposing, I was proposing through the block grant to do some work in the lowest, lowest income census tract, which is that Crane to Main kidney bean there from Main Street down to Crane Street. I suggested Cross Street and Hamilton Street as priorities and Heather said, before you can touch Hamilton Street, you need to do River Crane Street in order of operations and that should be the highest priority. And she also was advocating because it obviously goes by the manufacturer, right? Dexter Russell, so we want to support them. And we pursued the River Crane Street with the block grant funds. We, however, the project was a lot more expensive than we were going to anticipate. So we then went for a Mass Works grant to help fund the remaining. So we had four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in block grant funds, we had a cost estimate of over, I think it was high twos then, maybe it was three something then. We went for a Mass Works grant, miraculously got a two million dollar grant, Mass Works grant last year. And so now we're ready to go. We actually just opened the bid today for River Crane. Bids came in under budget, we're in a good position. And so we're ready to go. It goes just to the bridge, it goes to Dexter Russell.
So is this a repaving project?
And it's a, there will be water.
Water, sewer, stormwater.
Yes, exactly.
Sidewalks.
And sidewalks, yes. And it goes in conjunction with the rail trail because where the rail trail comes out behind twelve Crane Street, it will then come on-road at River Street and it will continue on-road to, to Mill Street. And so all of these are being updated. Counselor Dow asked very early on, can we please continue the project all the way to Pleasant Street? So the, the town supported the idea, we approved using chapter ninety funds for design, but then because we didn't have enough, we didn't have the money in the future and we had already so much going on, we decided to halt design of phase two and wait to see if we could find funding. We went for the Mass Works grant this past year to, or this year and now we're being awarded the two-point seven to complete the entire roadway. That next section is going to be disproportionately higher for a smaller amount of road and that's because there's that washout at the, right at, right after Mill Street there.
And the bridge.
Yeah, so that's going to cost a substantial amount to be able to repair that properly.
Okay.
And as the, as town manager said, we used the justification that they'll be coming in to do this tip project in two thousand and twenty-six to repair the bridges and manufacturers like the, the Simonelli Center, the Jakes's A and M Tool and Die, right? They're going to have to use alternate routes and that is the poorest section or the, the section in the worst condition on River Crane Street and so it's a priority. And the, I mean, why are we doing these roads? Like if you look in our, our roads ratings, right? You'll see that it's a very poorly rated road, it needs a lot of attention. So it will then allow us to pursue construction on Hamilton Street, which we've been trying to win funds for through the Raze Grant year over year, but keep being passed over. If for some reason we never get the Raze Grant for Hamilton, at some point does the town want to consider going for a tip for that road, you know, or another potential funding source? But, you know, it all comes together, right? And then it, so it's bringing that Globe Village into the downtown, you're, you'll see the connection of the revitalization from the tip project in the downtown with that new kidney bean right on into the Globe Village, twelve Crane Street will become a feature, you know, along the rail trail, hopefully we'll see revitalization there again. And then, you know, hopefully we see other properties develop around it.
Hence why this grant and this project comes out of Economic Development and Plan and Community Development Grant and all that, because all these grants are through Economic Development, even though D P W is heavily involved in it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set. Great. DeeDee?
Two questions, you probably already answered them, but I just got to get it straight, okay? It's costing the town nothing, this is a grant that's going to pay for everything or do we have to put in money?
No, we, no, we do have some town money in it. We have, well, combination monies, we have chapter ninety monies.
Okay.
We have C D B G, Community Development Block monies, which is grant money. We already put away some money from the water retained earnings and sewer retained earnings during the last budget cycle for the water sewer.
Updates.
The sewer portion, the water portion came out of existing capital projects that they had scheduled. So it's a combination of pockets of money, but.
Plus the Mass Works.
Plus Mass Works. So it's great, a combination of grant money, retained earnings from water sewer.
But we're not, it's already been.
It's already, this did, yes, with the, with the great bid that we got today, we, yes, we're not going to have to borrow any money for, for the remainder of this project. So all we'll do is when we, when we go out and work the further design on, for B S C Group, we know already we have two-point seven. So the difference is before with the River Crane, we were designing our project but really didn't know how we were going to fund it.
Right.
Now we've put in a design and already know we have 2.7 in the bank. And then we would work around any water sewer improvements that we do and pull out of whatever retained earnings or capital projects that we have monies already. Because we have to use those retained earnings, we can't just keep them there.
Right.
We would work to figure out what pockets would follow the water, what pockets would follow the sewer, while maintaining rates as well, so.
And if I could just say, so the companies that we've received letters of support from were Dexter Russell and A&amp;M Tool &amp; Die or the Simonelli Center. And they both specifically, Dexter Russell talked about how they genuinely appreciate the investment. You know, they talk about how they, they have over 200 employees. They've been here for, you know, their longest manufacturing company in town. And for us to show that respect for them and that their choice to stay here speaks volumes to them. And so they actually, over the last few months of finishing up the, the design, worked very closely with the designers to try and build in some of their own improvements that they're building, where we are tying into their foundation, et cetera, and changing some of their parking. So they took advantage of the opportunity, too. So it's great for them. And then the Jakes are, are hopeful that they're actually going to do some mixed use in the Simonelli Center to try and develop some of those upper floors. And they see this as investment towards that.
Okay. My second question was, with all of this, is it going to involve any DPW employees? Would that be a problem for Rich, where he's going to take somebody out to?
I, I think with this, you always have DPW involvement in some regards.
Okay.
I am working on securing possible services. I've talked to a couple of other, the county council chair and the DPW chair about the possibility of hiring, because we do not have a town engineer right now. We're working on a proposal to get some experienced individual and to do some project management because of the number of projects that we have. And we definitely need somebody because, you know, PEG does a great job at the grant management. We got the day-to-day DPW, but we need some experienced individuals that have project management oversight to help coordinate, even though we have engineering oversight, you know, but you need that town. And this would be a good opportunity for us to, to, to have that kind of balance. So we are cognizant of it because there's a lot of moving parts with everything that's going on.
Right, okay. What PEG is going to answer?
That engineering position's remained vacant for a long time.
For a long time.
Yeah, and so that does cause, and we are busier than ever, right?
We just have a lot of.
Bringing in funding and so many projects that were already in the pipeline that are happening. But when I said, "Yes, DPW is involved," I say that because I don't want people to see this as, you know, "I'm trying to manage this project by any means." Like, you know, the water department, so at the bid today, we had, you know, Hannah Prescott from DPW. Steve Gregoire was there, you know, I was there, Sue was there, all of us, you know. We all, there's so many different pieces to these projects. And then that day-to-day oversight that we'll have, thankfully, will be from Butch Jackson, actually. Who's being hired by BSC Group to do the oversight for both this and the rail trail combined. And that's why they thought that this would be a good use of their time, that they could overlap both projects because they'll be on-site for both of them simultaneously.
Now, my question, was Hamer, did he have his engineering license or whatever we're looking for here?
Hamer did, yes.
Okay, all right. I just wondering how that ended up being a position, but that's why, okay, I see it now. Okay. Thank you.
Just one more question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. And this, what we're voting on tonight is really an amendment to a prior agreement.
Correct.
And that, and that amendment is, is, just to be clear on this, it's not going to cost the town any additional money, correct?
Correct.
It's moving some funds from one portion of the project to another portion of the project.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Very good. Counsel Shenyi.
Couple of questions going back on that position. The important part that us as counselors, and I think we said to Jack, we want somebody that's going to be qualified for that position, that's going to be able to assist that department in moving forward. Because the higher a hunky off the street is not the way to go. So it's important that we get someone that's going to be qualified and be able to work with all of the departments at the same time, because it's going to be an important position. This particular job, probably more of a question for you. The additional 2.7 that we're going to have here, is there a possibility that that can be an add-on to the project?
No, no, because under a mass procurement, you're only allowed a change order of 20% of the overall project, so.
Because we did, we did that multiple times on Main Street.
Right, but because of the scope of that project, as long as you stayed within that, that amount, you can. And I wasn't, I'm not familiar with all the change orders that happen with Main Street, so I'm not going to comment on it because I can't say whether that was done correctly or not. This would not, you would not be able to do a change order to add this on this review. We would hope, we would hope we have the same.
Contract.
Engineer doing the design. When we go out to bid, there may be a possibility that the person that secures the bid for this, because they're already on-site, they may put a bid in that may be favorable because they're already mobilized or whatever, but we can't.
So are we going to try to arrange the bid to at least the work to be done as a continuation and not having a delay?
I think the hope would be we could sequence it in that manner, yes. Yes, we already have BSC Group going back to look at the design. We've already talked with Hannah, who today received her chief procurement officer, full designation, so. Which was good for her. So we now have three, PEG, myself, and Hannah. We'll work on that to make sure that we get the design. She's already going to check with Chapter 90 to see that. Because we had, we had budgeted a certain amount of Chapter 90 for the road project that we just did, but we came under what we had anticipated, that we had requested for Chapter 90. So we'll take a look at what we didn't spend in Chapter 90 for that. Would that be enough to pay the difference in the design cost so that we can go to 100% design and get the bid documents out? But a lot of that work has already been done and they're already there and they, they've already done a lot of the site work through BSC Group. So I'm hoping that we could be.
So who's the low bidder?
We don't know yet because we're evaluating those bids, but it was.
I'm happy to say, yeah, so the lowest apparent bidder looks like it will be A.J. Amarillo. And so that actually works well for the town. They're already doing East Main Street. They just won. If, if, when we go through the bids, the engineer is reviewing the bids right now. But if it stands that it's correct and they are the lowest apparent bidder, then they'll have River Crane. And that, that would, I would argue, would be even more a likelihood, a chance that they will end up making a more competitive bid for the next phase of River Crane.
It's still competitive, but as the engineer says, because they're already mobilized in that area, you're not remobilizing.
The great thing is, is this, this project, multimillion-dollar project is not going to see an increase in your taxpayer either. It's all existing.
It's all existing in grant monies, yes. A lot of work. I mean, next year, I had this conversation with a couple of people. I think next year the complaint is going to be from residents that they can't get anywhere in this town because there's too much construction going in the downtown area, which is going to be the challenge. Because there is a lot that we're going to be, there is going to be.
That's going to be disaster.
We have the downtown tip project, East Main Street, River Crane, and rail trail. You're talking probably $20 million worth of, that, on top of the fact that we just got an announcement from MassDOT that they gave us. And we don't even have to manage it. They're doing it. Two roadway projects that they're doing on state-numbered roads, North Woodstock Road and Eastford Road from the state line, three miles into the direction into town, which is their project that they're doing during FY '25. So there's, and then we have the CDBG project on North Street, Crystal Street, and all that, that will be bid out in the spring as well, for, for next summer as well. So that whole downtown quarter is going to be under construction and a lot of work. And we did have conversations today, possible agreements pending with NewCo in regards to Dresser Street. So we have a lot of stuff going.
So there'll be no complaints that roads aren't being done?
Yeah.
Too many one-time.
Are you all set?
I'm good.
Great. Is it possible, it occurs to me as you're saying this, is it possible, I'm going to add to your plate, to set up some kind of a coordination meeting?
I'm sure we will be doing that. And I'll, my thought today was we'll put together probably a presentation for the November meeting for council with all the projects and where we're at and what the timing and sequence is, so the council will know as well.
Somewhere in the future, all the, all the relevant players from all the different projects.
We, PEG and I had that conversation today about, about laying out what projects we have, who we have where, who the moving pieces are. And that's why we definitely need somebody, the company I spoke to about getting temporary help because we don't have an engineer, there's nobody applying for this, that they have two experienced individuals that are retired DPW directors with project management experience to come in. Because the engineering part of this is all done. It's the project management, and we're really going to need a good, strong project manager to coordinate on behalf of the town with the engineers and be that bridge with Rich, so Rich can, because we also have the wastewater treatment plant, RFP out. So we have a law on our plate right now.
Can we get a list of all the projects that we have open?
Well, that's what I just said, but we're doing it on November.
Everything that's open?
Yes.
Not just the road projects, but everything? Is that a difficult challenge to do?
That's what I said. I'll make a presentation in November meeting with all the projects and get it out there to.
Okay, so that'd be all the projects that we have open. Okay, that would be great.
At this time.
At this time.
Even something like the chief of police having to.
Well, no, there's a lot of coordination with DTLs and you have to coordinate with the fire department so they know what's open, which also is coordination with all the towns. Because there, with our major ambulance hospital was here. So there's a lot of coordination.
So you're getting a big dinner plate?
There is a very big dinner plate, yes.
Wow, that's good, though.
It's a wonderful, yeah, things are getting done.
Things are getting done.
Yep, thank you very much.
With regards to the list of projects going on at this time, so I have a running list of all grants that are open, and they may not be related to construction, right? It could be the municipal, the IT stuff. It could be like all those different grants. It could be green communities.
Well, we're going to put something together.
Are there sort of the things you'd be interested in, too?
The whole list. Not that it's going to be closed, but.
No, we'll get, we have a bunch of.
Jack's working on it.
Counselor.
Just a point of order. I think we're a little off-topic.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion on topic? Very good. All those in favor? Four-oh. Item number eight is adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor? We are adjourned.
Thank you for keeping us focused.